Good evening. Whoa, yeah. It's only my second meeting with the new microphone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March third, twenty twenty-five Regular City Council Meeting. And thank you for those who came a little early and heard the rest of our audit report. I'm sure that's why you came early, because you didn't want to miss that, but it was great. Um, I want to, um, preface this meeting by saying I just got back from Australia. And while my body is physically here, my brain is somewhere over the Pacific. So please bear with me. Um, and I want to thank Vice Mayor Jansen for handling the meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago in my absence. I appreciate that. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this meeting, at least the opening ceremonies of this meeting, over to him.
Let's do the invocation. And right after the invocation, before we go into the pledge, I'm going to introduce a special guest to lead us in, uh, the pledge. So let us pray. Good gracious heavenly Father, tonight, as I lift my brother and sister up in prayer, we just come to you in prayer of healing. Lord, we lost a special member of our community, a religious leader, and the loss and passing of Father Kelly. We know you have prepared a place for him in heaven. Lord, we just ask you to be with those who need healing and medical positions. Lord, we just ask you to be for those who have dependencies and having tough issues in life. Let we know that you're there for them and that your mercies begin brand-new every morning. Lord, we just thank you for all the blessings you give us. Put your hand upon our first responders and our militaries as they keep our peace for us. All this, in the master's name of your son, Jesus, we pray. Amen. So tonight, we have, uh, troop Scout Troop Two Eighty-Two. Uh, they're going to lead us in a prayer, and the prayer, the pledge. And, um, if y'all want to come forward, um, Patrol Scout Leader, Senior Patrol Scout Leader, uh, Colson Jansen is going to get us kicked off with the pledge. And then it's going to be followed up by the Scout oath.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. So the, this, Troop Two Eighty-Two, uh, it's a small troop, but, um, Colson is working on his citizenship in the community merit badge. And this is one of the requirements to attend a meeting and lead the pledge. And I'm pretty proud of this troop because what you just saw were, um, almost all Eagle Scouts standing in front of you. And Colson is on his star ranking, so he's just a step away from becoming an Eagle Scout himself. So thank you, gentlemen. Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen. Thank you all for being here today and joining us in our opening ceremonies. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk will call.
Councilmember Golding, here. Councilmember Horn. Councilmember Jansen.
Here.
Councilmember Sutton.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Wouters.
Here.
Mayor Hoffman. Here, moving on to approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes for the Regular City Council Meeting held on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements. Ms. Golding.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as Vice Mayor Jansen said, this past week, we did lose a, a very, a big part of our community who is a very quiet but compassionate part of our community, Father Kelly. I'm proud to say that he was, he was my priest for several years at Saint Paul's. And then when he retired, he continued to do Mass at Cypress Village, which is where my mother lives. And even at the age of ninety, he was still doing Mass every weekend. And he wouldn't like the, um, accolades or the, you know, all the nice words about him. But he was, he was a very, a, a very special part of our community. And, and it's, uh, it's very sad that we have lost him. If anybody, it's going to be crowded tomorrow, but his funeral is tomorrow at eleven AM at Saint Paul's. It will be streamed, so if you'd like to watch his funeral online as opposed to attending, you can do that. Just go to the Saint Paul's website. And also wanted to let everyone know that we've got a, um, free parking registration for residents that's going to be going on tomorrow here in council chambers from ten AM to two PM. So if you haven't registered for free parking, you can come here and get it done. Also want to let everyone know tomorrow, the legislative session starts and the craziness has already begun. We had a call today with the Florida League of Cities and, and I think we all agree that every year we don't think it could get worse, but every year it does. And this year is certainly, um, not any different. Um, the legislative session is going to be for sixty days and will end on May second. So, um, based on past experience, we have usually seen a flurry of activity towards the end of the session. Um, bills that we thought were dead come back to life. So, um, I just encourage my fellow council members to, to stay on top of what's going on in Tallahassee because it impacts, impacts us significantly here, um, in our local communities. Also want to let everyone know that there is a Beaches Town Hall with our Jacksonville Council Members, um, Wednesday, March fifth at seven PM. And by Jacksonville Council Members, we have five at-large council members. And because they're at-large, they represent us here at the beach too. But I don't know how many times any of you have ever seen them here at the beach. And they need, they need to be coming to the beach and understanding what our concerns are here at the beach. So there will be a town hall Wednesday, March fifth at seven PM at the Beaches Branch Library. Um, four of the at-large council members have confirmed. We've got Matt Carlucci, Nick Howland, Chris Miller, and Ron Salem, who have confirmed. And then our district councilperson Rory Diamond, who also represents us, uh, will be at the town hall as well. So I would encourage anyone to be, plan to come out to this town hall. It's a great opportunity to get to interface with our Jacksonville representatives who need to interface with us. And then last but not least, I just want to thank the city manager and staff for responding to concerns that were raised in our last council meeting during courtesy of Florida the Visitors. Um, I know that it's important for citizens to be heard when they have concerns. And definitely appreciate all that you guys did to follow up with those, with those citizens. And I just encourage our citizens to email any of us on the council if you do have concerns. We are more than happy to, um, connect you to the people in the city that can help you address those concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Golding, Mr. Jansen.
Yes, um, to big, piggyback off what Ms. Golding said, uh, one of the things that I heard this morning on the, on the Monday morning call in with the Florida League of Cities was there is a bill that was filed to abolish CRAs. And I didn't think I would ever see that one coming, coming across the, the dais. But sure enough, that happened this morning. So, um, once again, kind of like what I talked about in the workshop, if you attended it, Senate Bill One Eighty-Four dealing with a requirement for ADUs on any residential property. I don't think either one of those bills will make it all the way to the end, to the finish line and get passed. I think they'll, they'll die somewhere along the lines, but you never want to bank on that. That's one thing you just don't want to do. So we have to remain vigilant and make sure that we fight this to, to the end because those two things are important to our community. Uh, also, last Wednesday, I attended, I'm a member of the Pension Board for our city, and I attended our quarterly pension, uh, meeting. And when I look at the numbers that were presented in the briefing today, um, I'm pretty proud of our Pension Board. Uh, we're doing amazing work. I think that Ms. Gossett would agree with me to some extent. Uh, the general employees sitting at eighty-five percent. And police officers at ninety-nine point four-three percent net. And the, um, firefighters at ninety-two point three-four percent. Uh, if you really want to know what that means, kind of take a look at what's going on in Duval County downtown and look at what their percentage is and compare it to ours. Uh, I don't want to say much more than that, other than do a little bit of homework, but we're doing amazingly well. So congratulations on our Pension Board.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen. Anybody else? Go ahead.
So again, like last week, I'll finish up with fun stuff instead of what they're talking about. Um, so had the opportunity this weekend to support one of our community business partners, Waste Pro, uh, as they had their annual barbecue cook-off. So Chris from Waste Pro will be representing our little community in a national barbecue contest. And it was just kind of a neat experience to go out and this is, in my background, I'm in healthcare, not normally, um, a business I would interact with. And I tell you, it just filled my heart with joy to interact with folks that care so much about our community and helping us keep it clean in the way it needs to be. So it was just a really, really encouraging and wonderful experience. And I just want to take a second and share it with you.
Thank you. That's it for council announcements. Courtesy of the floor to visitors, we have a couple that are not attached to an agenda item. We'll start with Jim Sorrell.
Could you turn on the microphone, please?
Ah, hello, everybody. I'm, I'm James Sorrell. What an improvement in the, uh, sound system. Four-two-eight North Tenth Avenue, Jacksonville Beach. Uh, tonight I've come to you and unfortunately, want to point out a couple of things. It's about the planning, uh, commission. Uh, it's just small things that need tweaked. First thing is that, uh, there's, close to my house, there's a bar that was going to be, uh, coming up for a conditional use. Uh, the notice was printed on January tenth. The, uh, postmark is twenty-ninth, which the clerk has. And the meeting was on the tenth, and I received the letter on the twenty-fifth. I called the planning commissioner and found out that it passed. So that's water over the dam. But I want to point out that, that there is a problem with the mail system, which has nothing to do with us. It's not the first time I've gotten things three, four weeks in back. So maybe there could be a better way to notify. Because if you don't show up, the commission's just think you're not interested. And that's not the truth. People are very interested. And a lot of times, they just don't show up because of peer pressure. They know the people that are asking for, uh, a variance or a conditional use. But I want to mention that on the planning commission, they rarely ever put conditional uses when they pass something. And as a result, the planning director, when they put the, uh, recommendation in, it was not accurate because of the fact that conditions weren't put in. The first, the first, uh, applicant for this was Poor Craft Beer, who before they even opened, changed their name to Really Good Beer. So that is just one. And they were supposed to be a, uh, God, what do you call it? Uh, growler only, no bar. But they're, they did the whole presentation where they're just going to have a tasting. So anyway, that's how that came about. There's a long story. So that was what it was supposed to be, a growler. I asked at that particular time to have a conditional use. One member, uh, wanted to put the conditions that they were asking for. And, uh, it never got passed. So anyway, the main thing I'm trying to point out is the fact that having conditional uses, I understand we have, as Bill Mann always pointed out to these boards, is the fact that they do not have, what do you call it, um, enough code enforcement to go through this. But if you, if there's something, if the conditions were there, then they would have found out that this growler bar, that turned into a bar that had set, uh, thirty. They had two parking spaces and the use of residents for parking. And my house unfortunately was, was subject to, uh, I don't have to tell you. Anyway, and the, this next one, like the Spruce Plant, that turned out to be a good neighbor. But that one acted just like that, like a small, small bar, whatever. I'm hoping this next one will be the same. But the fact that, that there was no conditions at the beginning, it was classified as alcohol drinking establishment and not a growler taproom. And that's why I just want to point out is that they needed to put this in there. And unfortunately, the commission had used a lot of personal opinions rather than facts. And didn't think that was new because of the fact that we have two restaurants with bar, three restaurants with bars in the same shopping center.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sorrell. Kathy Hall?
Good evening. Uh, Kathy Hall, sixteen thirty-nine Sixth Street South, Jacksonville Beach. I have a question regarding flash vote or job form. I'm not sure what name it's really going by. And wondering what the status of this was. Um, in the end of October, I communicated with Jacob Board, um, with some questions and concerns about the survey. And he immediately responded and completely responded to me. Um, so thank him for that. Um, he did indicate in that communication that the results of the survey would be immediately and done and in a timely manner. Um, and the public would receive a summary of the results. In the end of October, I took the survey. And I think this has been the only survey that has come out of this contract thus far. But I have heard nothing, um, about any summary of what this survey said. It was on the urban trails. And I'm just wondering, we've got three months into this contract. We've got one survey. Um, I'm really not sure. I didn't go back into the last, into the budget to see how much you're paying this group for this. But I'm just wondering what the status of this is. Thank you.
Thank you. We will get some follow-up from Mr. Board for you. All right. That is the last courtesy of the floor card. Uh, next up, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And just to, if you're following along, that was the, um, the audited financial report that we reviewed prior to this meeting. Okay. Next up, we have a proclamation for Flood Awareness Week. Um, and we do not have anyone here to accept the proclamation, but I've been asked to go ahead and read it. So my reading glasses are on. Standby. Whereas the city of Jacksonville Beach has experienced severe weather in the past in the form of extreme rainfall or tropical system events resulting in flooding in both coastal and riverine areas. And this flooding has caused damage and flood losses to homes and buildings in all areas, whether they are high-risk special flood hazard areas or low-to-moderate risk flood zones. And whereas the city of Jacksonville Beach is a voluntary participant in the National Flood Insurance Program that provides residents with the opportunity to protect themselves against flood loss through the purchase of flood insurance at reduced insurance premium rates, as well as setting higher regulatory standards to reduce the flood risk and potential flood damage to their property. And whereas the city of Jacksonville Beach has been a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System since nineteen ninety-two and maintains a class-six rating, which provides a twenty percent reduction to all residents on flood insurance policy premiums. And whereas the reduction of loss of life and property damage can be achieved when appropriate flood preparedness, control, and mitigation member, measures are taken before a flood. And whereas, as public education and awareness of potential weather ha, weather hazards and methods of protection are critical to the health, safety, and welfare of residents, the Florida Flood Plane Managers Association have declared the week of March third through ninth, twenty twenty-five, as Flood Awareness Week to promote awareness and increase knowledge of flood risk and the availability of flood insurance, flood protection methods, and how to prepare for emergencies. Now therefore, we, the city of Jacksonville Beach, in coordination with state and federal agencies, do hereby proclaim March third through March ninth, twenty twenty-five, as Flood Awareness Week. I don't, I don't know if we applaud for that or not, but if you want to. All right. Moving on to, uh, city manager, new business, item A. I think we have Allison Riley here to present.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Riley, and I'm the events coordinator for the city. Um, I'm here tonight because last year, city council expressed interest in doing a pilot program for a fully ticketed event. Um, as you all are, are aware, our policy right now does not permit for fully ticketed events. Um, right now, we only permit, uh, free events that can only ticket for half of the Seawalk lawn. Um, after the intent was laid by city council, um, a evaluation committee was put together and an RFP was put out. The RFP was sent out to, um, our database of event producers as well as advertised nationally. At the conclusion of it, we did receive two applicants. Um, the commit, the evaluation committee reviewed both and ultimately decided that our team, um, produced the best RFP. So we would like to move forward with them. I do want to express a couple of things. Um, not everything that is in the packet is concrete and will happen. That's just a concept plan. Um, I know that it's for a two-day festival in March, which does go against our current policy. So we would work with them to make sure everything that happens applies to our policy and is good to go that way. Um, but overall, we felt that our team had the best, uh, safety plan, transportation plan, and had the best experience that was comparable to the events that we know can be put on at the Seawalk Pavilion. Um, so if there are any questions that you guys have, I'm open and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. And a motion?
I move that we award RFP number zero-one dash two-four-two-five for a ticketed special event to Real-Time Entertainment and Management.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Ms. Golding.
Allison, can you clarify? You, you said that they proposed a two-day event. Is it actually going to be a two-day event or is it going to be a one-day event?
No, ma'am. It'll be a one-day event to comply with our festival, or with our festival policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Horn?
Um, as I look at the VIP viewing portion there, so when we looked at, um, reworking this area in the future, one of the things that we actually looked at was having the south side of the main stage area, the big, big plaza, the big, uh, pavilion area. There was normally access there for pedestrians that are not involved. Is there still going to be that? Like, say, I'm riding up First Street and I don't, can't get through. Is there going to be a way or do I have to stop and go around? Does that make sense? Is there, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to see, is there, is the whole area here going to be inaccessible to the general public? Like, where was, where will the person who's riding their bike up First Street be limited? I guess I was trying to figure that out.
Yes, sir. So it would be a similar, uh, road closure to most events at the Seawalk Pavilion that have First Street closed. Um, this one is a little different because it would have First Avenue closed, but the boardwalk would remain open. Um, and if there were any safety concerns put place by the fire marshal, who's part of the events committee, we would work with the producer to make sure that any avenues that need to be open are open. Um, this is just a concept plan for what the producer would like, but it doesn't mean that the layout will be exactly this.
Okay, just, yeah, I guess conceptually, I mean, a lot of times I think if there's a festival going on, people can still get through on their bikes, like, hey, you know, and they'll just kind of hop off their bike, kind of walk through and hop back on their bike on the other side, whichever direction they're going on first. I just wanted to ask that. Okay, thank you.
Any, Ms. Golding?
Sorry, just a quick revisit. So I was just thinking about this and I, it sounds like this was distributed pretty far and wide. And the fact that we only had two respondents kind of makes me wonder why we only had two. Do we have any, do you have any thoughts as to why we didn't have more people apply?
I mean, we were a little shocked too, to only get two back. I don't have the slightest idea why it was only two, but we did circulate it as much as we could on our side and then nationally as well.
Okay. Thank you. I can't put my fingers on it, but one of the requirements was a proven track record of experience within Jacksonville Beach, which is a pretty small universe, even if you're throwing it out nationally. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. And I think, um, I just want to say, our team does a great job. They've got, especially Fin Fest, um, they've done an excellent job, very professionally managed, well-run, not just here in Jacksonville Beach, but they do events nationwide. So I'm really glad that that's the organization that rose to the top, um, with this review committee. Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Wagner?
Quick comment, and this is, and agree with, uh, the mayor and her comments just then. So my comments have nothing to do with who applied for this and/or who accepted it. Um, one of the things, just going through the process as a member of council and kind of sharing, um, I'm going to encourage that as we go forward with other pilots and other more innovative programs, that we contemplate a more inclusive process for all those involved, including council. I understand the legalities of cone of silence and everything else, but, um, I think those are not put in place to, um, they're put in place to protect certain things and there are legal reasons for them, and I get all that. But they also don't encourage, uh, innovation and inclusion as we start to do more innovative, different types of things in our community. So, um, one of the things I'll, I'll continue to advocate for is a, is, is processes where, uh, we all get to be involved at, at different levels than we would if this was more blocking and tackling type stuff. So again, not a comment to you and the great work you and the team have done or the wonderful people that have, uh, applied to support and, and create a great event for our, our city. But just in general, a process-based comment.
Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I agree. Uh, just a follow-up, Allison or Jason, on what Councilman Horn brought up. So if pedestrian or bike traffic were headed north on First Street there, will there be an opportunity to get to the boardwalk? Or would traffic have to literally turn around and go back to Beach Boulevard?
I believe that's something that we could make happen if it's a concern and it seems like it is. I'm confident that the producer, um, would find a solution for that. So we'll make sure that that's, um, a big turning point with this, with this permit.
Thanks.
I don't share that concern because a bike could still pass on the boardwalk or Second Street with this layout. And we do have at least one event already that blocks, um, that because they have one entryway. And, and with a ticketed event, you need to have a little more control of access than we do with our current events. So I, I do think we need to view this one a little bit differently than we view kind of the way we always do it, to your point, to encourage some creativity. Um, I do appreciate the fact that this was done with a committee outside of the council because I do think we need to keep, um, that separation in who, who's getting something like this, especially since this is a somewhat, um, controversial topic in our community. So appreciate the work that was done by, um, the review committee as well as the applicants that, uh, did take part in proposing an event. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk will call.
Oh, sorry. One thing I was just, I was sorry. I thought Counselor Sutton was going to say something, so I was waiting for him. And then, uh, one thing I was just gonna, one, no, one thing I would say is that, I guess, and yes, this is a little different than what we've done in the past. So let's make sure that our team or, you know, whoever's putting on this event, number one, that there's good signage and that everybody knows. And then we also let the citizens know ahead of time, just so that, you know, hey, they may not be paying attention to the schedule, but they might get something that says, you're going to go out for a bike ride this weekend. You know, there's, you're not going to be able to get through if there is a big festival. So just as, again, so the citizens are aware ahead of time that this is a departure from our normal. But if it works out and everybody likes it, maybe we can do it again.
I think that's a great point, the communication plan from not only the event organizers, organizers, but from the city. I think that's a great point, the communication plan from not only the event organizers, organizers, but from the city, since this is going to look different, um, and maybe throwing it into a council briefing prior to the event would be a great idea. Mr. Wouters?
Do you know what day in March this is being considered for?
March twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh. Since it was applied as a two-day, they'll need to pick one day.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk roll call.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item B. Mr. Barron, you're normally already at the podium by now.
Um, I've got, uh, a three-part approval tonight compared to my normal two-part approval. Um, this is involving replacing servers at the, um, water reclamation facility, which is formerly our wastewater treatment plant. Um, several years ago, we moved away from our agreement with Archimedes to provide support for our computer-controlled processes at the wastewater plant. Uh, with, with Mr. Rieger moving in and helping, um, the city taking on additional IT responses. We've moved that to in-house. So this is something that, uh, is kind of a combination project between me and, um, IS department, simply because I don't mess with servers. I just have to pay for them. So, um, so we, anyway, we, this, uh, decision was, was not taken lightly. There was a couple of different choices. We went back and forth a whole bunch. Um, I apologize for getting this sole source letter to you so late. We were still rounding that up today. Um, which is basically the agreement between AWC and the city so that we don't allow other people to get into the networks because this controls everything that goes on at the wastewater treatment plant. So, um, the first part, of course, is to approve the contract to, to actually buy the servers. The second part is for the mayor and city manager to execute the contract. And then the third part will be for approving them as a sole source for that purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. And a motion on part one, please.
I move that we approve the proposal from AWC for the upgrade to Wind CC at the water reclamation facility.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Horn?
Dennis, in April of twenty-three, we did approve for purchase of, I think it was similar through AWC. Is this a replacement for what we had then or, that's what I'm trying to figure out?
Um, no, we didn't replace those, but I think at that point in time, we were doing some equipment upgrades there. And so that was for that work. And then what we found is our new, um, process software requires us to have a brand-new server. So we actually had a set to approve, um, a purchase of a server that would ultimately require us to purchase a new server after December of this year. Um, that didn't seem to make a lot of sense to spend a big pile of money to wait and then spend another big pile of money in seven months. So, uh, we worked with IS to be able to come up with an appropriate solution to be able to upgrade once instead of having to do it twice.
And the purchase price for that one is, I want to say, one of like close to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, almost similar to this. What, what prevent, I mean, is, is this going to be something that we're going to see every couple of years now or what prevents this from occurring again in two years?
So I'm not sure if I can answer all of that. As part of our moving away from having this as a contracted service and move it, uh, to IT or IS to be able to handle, it's taken a significant amount of bandwidth for, um, their department to get up to speed over the last couple of years. And then right now, unfortunately, every time we have any kind of an event at all, we get locked out of our own server and we can't keep track of what's going on at the wastewater plant. So the good thing is it continues to function and run like it's supposed to, whether or not we can see it or not. We just can't see it. So it's usually a, a fairly involved process to get there.
Okay. And like I said, my, my concerns, I'm sure they're shared by my council members is, you know, number one, obviously, the, you know, the proper functioning of our equipment and everything going and providing the services to the citizens that they, that they need. Um, these are not just wants, these are needs, but then at the same time, I want to make sure that we're making sure the citizens are getting for their tax dollars, you know, what they're paying for. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Uh, Mr. Rieger?
Was there a question for me? I didn't hear.
Your name was referenced in Mr. Barron's answer, but I-
Oh, perhaps Mr. Rieger can chime in with, um-
Yeah, I can comment. I'm sorry about that. Um, as Dennis was talking, we had a contract previously with a company called Archimedes and they managed the hardware, um, and software to some extent. Um, we have had to, um, cancel that. They were not providing the service that we needed. So we got a new company, AWC, as Dennis was referencing. They came in to the, uh, water reclamation facility and did a complete review of all the technology that's there for this. Um, and they recommended some intermediate steps where we could use the existing hardware that Archimedes originally purchased. The problem with that was Archimedes was now out of the picture and they had all of the access information, the username, password, administrative passwords, and we couldn't get any of that. The technology was about six years old. So at the end of the day, what we decided to do was buy new enterprise technology, put it over in a water reclamation facility, and have our internal services install that and manage it going forward.
See, that seems reasonable. It's about three or four iPhones back. So, uh, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk roll call.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. And part two?
I move to authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute the proposal from AWC to, for the upgrade to Wind CC at the water reclamation facility.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk roll call.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Item three?
I move we declare AWC as a sole source.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk roll call.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Item C, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, Nicholas Johnson, I'm an electrical engineer with Beaches Energy Services, and I'm coming to you tonight for the purchase of eleven twenty-six KV breakers. And more specifically, the sole source to allocate Myers Controlled Power LLC as a sole source provider of these breakers. Uh, currently, we have fifty-one twenty-six point four KV breakers throughout our, uh, distribution system. Uh, they operate on five substations from the northern end to the southern end, currently on the northern end of our, uh, distribution system. Okay, I got it up there. Um, we have six breakers that are currently out, two of which reside at Pembyn Substation, the other four at Jack's Beach. We already plan to replace the four at Jack's Beach this summer. And we need to immediately move forward with replacing the ones at Pembyn Substation due to the two recent failures. Uh, we did a diagnostic kind of interpretation of like our ten years of data and we found that all the breakers are close to an operational end of life. Uh, a little bit sooner than we initially expected, but the data is definitely pointing that way. And during testing, some of the other breakers were starting to exhibit the same symptoms as the failed breakers. So without tying too much more of the system together and operating in a safe and controlled fashion before we put anything else at risk, uh, you know, customers, uh, linemen, more equipment, what, whatever. We want to go ahead and proactively replace all the breakers at Pembyn Substation. Uh, requesting to move four hundred and eleven thousand to make this purchase for the longevity time items, which is specifically the breakers and the relays that would be associated with each breaker.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And a motion?
I move that we approve the purchase of eleven twenty-six KV breakers from Myers Controlled Power LLC.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Horn?
Just to make sure I understand, so how many are, I know we're replacing these eleven. Are these, the, the rest of them of the fifty-one that are currently in operation are all good to go? Or did I understand you saying that some of those are nearing end of life or looking towards that direction?
Uh, the breakers that we're replacing would be specifically at Pembyn Substation out of the five distribution substations that we have. Uh, the other one is Jack's Beach that has four failed, uh, currently. It's a different style of breaker. It's like an outdoor, um, just by itself. Where these are, if you go back to the previous slide, you can kind of see that all of this is in a metal-clad switchgear, uh, operation. So each of the bottom doors on the right and left side of, of this hallway essentially, um, house an individual breaker. Um, and if you, if you look at the agenda pictures that were uploaded, you can kind of see the unique situation that we're in as far as looking at a very specific breaker that, that goes in there where most of our outdoor switch yards that you might be more used to seeing, you can see the highlighted yellow area.
Oh, yeah, no, th- those I know. I, the main reason for asking the question-
Yeah, go ahead.
Not that I'm questioning you. I just, when I looked at this and it said thirty-three week lead time, in the back of my mind, I said, do we need to get more? Are we going to have failures in between now and the time that these get here? That we're then going to need, that, that's my question. It's like, are we anticipating others to fail in any kind of near future?
We anticipate them all to fail in the near future, uh, due to the operational count. So breakers specifically, how many times you open and close it? That's what, what we go on. And currently, they're all approaching a very close margin as far as operational count. So how many times we've opened and closed them? Um, this count kind of suffers, if you're opening and closing with no load on it, it's one condition. It's way worse if you have a full load, like a fault, and it opens to protect the system. So that's more strenuous on the breaker itself. But the two that got replaced, or two that failed, are specifically the highest-used breakers at the substation. We're replacing all of them because they're within fifteen percent or so of the operational uses. So we're ordering all breakers right now. And this will be the thirty-plus weeks before they all come in.
Okay, I mean, again, I just want to make sure that, like, if there's something else that you guys see that's going to fail in the future, come to us. I mean, looking at this thirty-three weeks, that's a concern to me is that, you know, let's get as many of these fixed or anticipated as we can get done. I'm very, um, fiscally conservative, as you guys have figured out, over the years, but at the same time.
Just to add to that, um,
I don't want to see-
Three years ago, the lead time on these was approximately two months. So that's just, shows what we're dealing with post-pandemic and with materials and, and supply chains. So that's why we're acting now.
Okay, so, no, that's why I was like, hey, if you, if you, if you guys need more, let us know. I'd rather have the system up and running.
For those watching at home, that was Alan Putnam, Director of Beaches Energy. Mr. Wagner, I'm sorry, Mr. Jansen?
Oh. Um, Myers Controlled Power, did, did they put the breakers in to begin with?
Uh, no, Control Power Corporation was the original manufacturer. The company's been bought out and now it's currently Myers Controlled Power.
Same company, different name?
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, so they have done work for us prior. So we're, we know their, their work product, so to speak. Um, and I guess that's why they're sole source and nobody else makes these breakers except for them?
Uh, that's correct. There can be retrofit options that are available, but it's at a much higher cost and longer lead time. It requires a, you can either replace the breaker like we're going to do and you just slide and plug in this one, plugs right in. Um, or you can buy the entire enclosure, which is the entire cabinet structure and everything, buses, all that for a much higher cost. Okay, so, thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Okay, so I'm sure it's just me being confused. So there's, if I followed the conversation, there's some total of fifty-one breakers? Was that correct?
Yeah, that, so the fifty-one breakers are throughout the whole system.
Okay, and then there was a comment that said all of them are at end of life and we're ordering eleven. So is there a game planned that you can share with us at some point for the other forty or did I misunderstand? Am I tying things together that shouldn't be tied together?
Might have been confusing on my end, but, uh, basically we have five substations. The two on the north end have had the most failures, um, the four of which have a very similar breakers setup and type. Uh, break, the fifth substation being Pembyn Substation is a very unique substation. It's metal-clad switchgear, uh, which looks like that. And there's only a very specific breaker that plugs right in. You can replace the whole thing, uh, enclosure, everything at a much higher price, longer lead time, a lot more engineering. But this is just to replace the ones at Pembyn Substation specifically that, that are failing.
Okay, so then if you'll help me with my understanding, again, I'm sure it's me, the comment, can you kind of do the interplay between the comment of, is it all fifty-one or at end of life or just the two substations we're talking about? Cause that, I just-
Specifically Pembyn Substation, uh, Jacksonville Beach was another one that we've identified and put in the CIP budget for this year. And that's going to take place in, this summer. And we're proactively doing this one at Pembyn Substation.
Okay, so the other, the other three substations, all of those aren't at end of life?
Good to go.
Okay. So, just to, just to speak on Alan Putnam, Director of Beaches Energy, we do have those other break, other substations breaker replacements in the five-year SIP where, where they're needed and then further on, we'll be planning it after the five years. So. Yeah, I figured it was me and my understanding. That's what I was asking.
Ms. Golding? So to follow up on Mr. Wagner's questions, because I was, I was wondering the same thing as well. Since we're getting eleven, will those, are those eleven totally designated for re- replacement or do we, are the, are we getting any extras, so to speak, in case anything? I mean, I know they're expensive, right? So I'm sure we're probably not getting extras. But what happens if we have some failures that we weren't expecting before we get these circuit breakers? What do we do?
So for some of the other configurations within our substations, we do have a few spares. However, in the past, it's really not something we've done. It'd carry a whole bunch of spares on site, but we do have some for those other substations.
But are we, I mean, I hate to ask this question, but do we have, in the event, because this is a long lead time, that we have some failures that we weren't expecting? Are we going to be okay?
Based on everything, our analysis so far, we should be fine. Yeah. We've looked into this very deeply. We're, we're pretty confident, so.
Okay.
But like I said, you know, if something could happen that we don't expect, we don't foresee that, so.
We will keep the, a few of the lesser count breakers that have not had as many operations because Pembyn Substation, again, being very unique and because we're ordering like-for-like replacement through Myers, we would be able to probably u- reutilize one of these breakers in the event of a failure.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Jansen?
So you, you said that there was a significant cost increase between, um, just doing a replacement versus a, a complete overhaul?
Yes.
Um, is there a opole- obsolescence factor in these? Otherwise, are we going to end up having to do that anyways in ten years because this technology is not going to be supported? Or is this something, I mean, I'd hate to throw money away now versus, alright, let's bite the bullet and get something better if there's a planned ob- obsolescence in this system?
Well, well, there's always a risk of obsolescence, uh, but the breakers that we order have a thirty-to-forty-year life expectancy. Um, it-
Good answer.
You good? Good use of the word obsolescence. Gold star. Uh, any other questions? Okay, we had a motion and a second on this one, right? Madam Clerk roll call.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, item two?
I move that we declare Myers Controlled Power LLC as a sole source provider.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk roll call.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Putnam for the backup there. Uh, moving on to ordinance A, this is, uh, the land development code and unfortunately, Director Ireland has been called away and, um, will not be able to join us this evening. But we have Mr. Popoli who will be giving us a staff update.
Hang up. Most of me, anyway. Uh, good evening, Christian Popoli.
Uh, good evening, Christian Popoli, uh, Senior Planner, Planning and Development. Um, I'm not gonna do a big song and dance, cause you guys have heard this over and over, but um just to touch on uh the basics. Uh, this process has been going on since uh April of twenty twenty-two, so we've been at this a while, I think we've uh. Gotten to the point of a pretty good um draft code. Um, we did have the meeting on uh the twentieth of last month, um, there were a number of recommendations or. Concerns that came out of that, as well as the ones that we had heard from you guys and the planning commission, so I'm just gonna kind of go through. Our current recommendations on those issues. Um, the first one, which came from the planning commission, uh, which was to remove term limits for the boards, we did that prior to the uh. February twentieth meeting, um, obviously there's second recommendation to defer, you guys did, and we had our meeting on the twentieth. Um, the question of changeable digital message signs, uh, we have changed that back to twenty-four hours, and if you guys have a. Alternate time you want to suggest, we're happy to entertain whatever you guys like. Um, we did get some comments on uh accessory dwelling units. Uh, this time staff isn't recommending anything different than what's in the current draft. Um, the same thing would go for the residential um lots and setbacks, um, lot coverage and setbacks. Um, we've, we're pretty confident with what's in there will work well for the community. Um. Other than that, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions or. You know, and I went through a lot of uh comments with some of you guys individually, and we've tried to capture all that, so. I know that there are some things that probably want to discuss, and I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Popoli, uh, Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title? An ordinance of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, repealing and replacing chapter thirty-four land development code. Of the city's code of ordinances in its entirety, providing for legislative findings, repeal of conflicting ordinances. Severability, Scrivener's errors, codification, and an effective date. Thank you, Madam Clerk, this ordinance for the amendment of the land development code is before the council for a public hearing and consideration on its first reading. Under the laws of the state of Florida, an ordinance which changes the actual list of permitted conditional or prohibited uses within a zoning category. Or which otherwise changes the text of the land development code is a quasi legislative proceeding. A quasi legislative proceeding means that a governing body is acting in its rulemaking capacity. It is the duty of the council to arrive at sound decisions regarding the use of property within the city. This includes receiving citizen input regarding the proposed uses within a zoning category. The application has been reviewed by staff and the planning commission for consistency with other portions of the land development code. And the comprehensive plan, the council may hear from all interested parties in the legislative determination of an amendment to the text. Of the land development code, the council's decision on a text amendment is based on the criteria set forth in section thirty-four dash two eleven of the land development code. Each member of the council has been provided a copy of the criteria, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighty, eighty-two twenty. Um, we already heard from staff, Kimberly Horn, representatives, do you have anything to add at this point, and thank you for being here. Um, and with us through this whole process, we will um. Start with the uh public comment cards, we have a few, uh, and I'll start with Casey Braun, come on up, you know the drill.
Casey Braun, eight oh four Thirteenth Avenue North, Jack's Beach. Okay, I have a couple primary concerns that I've prevented, presented before, and still see as potential issues to our beautiful neighborhoods. The first is strength of wording, the city's trying to be fair to homeowners, but being flexible. To them opens doors to developers and their lawyers coming in and narrowing it to the wall, overusing these same variances. My second concern is the multiple ways that codes can end up changing neighborhoods. It's important to understand that anything that is put into our development package can be implemented in different directions. Section thirty-four six oh four is a section that applies to this concern. My initial thoughts were that this could be better controlled, the variances were restricted to homeowners living in their home with a homestead exemption. I was informed that this process would almost certainly violate the equal protection clause of the US Constitution. This provision requires that all persons similarly situated should be treated alike. If this is true, would removing the homestead exemption portion of this clause? And just requiring the applicant to live in the property change this? If this is not workable, could we limit requests to one variance at a time? With the limit of one per year? This would help hold back radical changes to our neighborhoods while still allowing homeowners to upgrade their properties. Another possible help in maintaining the neighborhood character. Is when considering administrative approval of a modification to a front of yard setback on a residential property. If there is an established prevailing setback along the immediate block. Is to review the landscaping on the properties in that area. And require matching these to avoid the stark naked home fronts that we're seeing more and more. Okay, um, another thing that I saw that I would like to add. Is that newspapers are considered the main source of uh communicating with the public. But our beaches leader recently closed, and we've also upgraded our communication with citizens through a newsletter that's pretty good. And I wonder if this could be put into the uh format to use as communication with the citizens. And the last thing is intersections where they want to reduce the line joining points along the right of way from twenty feet to fifteen feet. And then the CBD uh to ten feet from five fifteen feet. And I think that due to the dangerous prevalence of electric bikes that pop up out of nowhere, that we probably shouldn't do this. Anyway, thank you for the time, I'm out.
Thank you, Mr. Braun, uh, John Tipton.
I used to be able to just jump up, taking a little, taking a little longer these days. John Tipton, I reside at five oh three Sixth Street North, I've lived in Jacksonville Beach for seventy years, just. I watched it go through from a naval seaport, Liberty Town. Uh, I lived in the Bladed area. And I was here when we had to start giving away street ends, so we could get anybody to invest a dime in Jacksonville Beach. Uh, a little different from what it is today. Uh, I think what we've got in this um new. Version is fine, it has some errors still in it, and I understand we're gonna change, have the ability to change it. Uh, yearly if necessary, uh, there are a couple of things, uh, in all, any of y'all who. Served on either the Board of Adjustment or any of the other boards have seen me up here. Uh, fighting against overdevelopment for over thirty years. I'm a little worried that. Six months from now, I'm gonna be back, well, I'm sorry, not six months, but when the new LDC takes effect. That I'm gonna be back up here fighting against somebody that wants fifty-two percent or fifty-four percent, I certainly hope that's not gonna happen. The other thing I'd like to see is if we're going to make all of these new. Requirements, the one thing we do not have is a code enforcement person or or group. That have teeth. Um, as you have probably know, if you drive up and down Fourth Avenue on the weekends, there are cars parked all over. Front yards, all over the sidewalks, and if you open these sidewalks up and make it part of a urban trail. I'm not sure how you're gonna keep all of these cars off this urban trail. Quite often in my neighborhood, there are seven and eight cars parked in front of these houses, these are, you know, the, the Airbnbs. So if we're gonna do this, let's put some teeth in the code enforcement group. Have somebody working on the weekends, cause that's when it's gonna happen, have somebody code on the weekends and have them come down. M- make whatever they have to do, whether it's recommendations or giving out tickets or whatever they have to do to make this thing stick. Other than that, like I said, there's a few other errors in it that I'd like to see corrected, but we gotta get this thing done, cause we can't live under the one that's forty years old. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton, Terry Deluge.
Hello, um, my name is Terry Deluge, four oh five Thirty-second Avenue South, Jacksonville Beach, Florida, three two two five oh. Honorable mayor, city council members. Um, as I mentioned before, I served with Mr. Sutton and uh some other people, twenty-three years on the planning commission. I also served on the board of the ju- on the board with Bill Brenton, with Scenic Jacksonville. And of course, digital signs were his um, were his forte, he was, he was probably one of the premier attorneys in the country. Fighting billboards, signage, et cetera. Um, I just did an AI search, um, digital billboards, especially those frequently changing content can capture drivers' attentions more than. Traditional static signs increase attention particularly during transitions between advertisements may lead to driver distraction. Glare invisibility issues, bright electronic measures, message signs can cause glare potentially overwhelming driver's perception. Of critical regulatory warning and guide signs. Um, regions, research found that drivers often look at these signs for more than two seconds. A duration associated with increased crash uh risk. Research analyzing crash data. Near digital signs and billboards in Florida and Alabama revealed significantly higher crash rates, twenty-five percent. In Florida and twenty-nine percent in Alabama at sites near digital signs and billboard, billboards compared to areas without them. Um, study in two thousand eighteen examined the effects of LED billboards, luminance size. And location on drivers that concluded that high luminance levels, especially at night, could cause glare potentially impairing drivers' visual performance. Increasing risk of accidents, particularly with those high brightness, frequent content changes. Or certain flicker characteristics can distract drivers and impair visibility, therefore posing safety risk. As such, it is crucial. For city planners and policymakers to carefully consider these factors. When evaluating regu- regulations related to electronic signs. And the frequency of content changes. I, I could go on, that, that was just a simple AI search, um, but if you think about it, I mean, driving up here today. Um, excuse me, I, I'm, I'm texting and there's a sign, and then I look around, that's all it takes to get, to have an accident. That's all it takes, and we all know that people are texting a lot more than they ever have. Um, we've got to be the adults in the room, because the generations that's coming up. Are being seduced by the ability to text, and then we're talk, then we're gonna, then we're trying to distract them again. With digital signs. You've seen my picture, that is, stop there, um, that, um. That is a possibility, it doesn't take many digital signs in a row, and again, if you reduce. The, the, the signage frequency, the changing. It, 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 it flies in the face of common sense to think that. Ch- signs changing less than twenty-four hours will be easier to control. Than signs that change twenty-four hours. It, it just, that, that doesn't make common sense. A sign that changes every twenty-four hours will be easier to control than signs changing, again, they're not all gonna change at the same time. So they're gonna change at different times, and I'll wrap it up here, we're growing, you want that growth, but you want it. To preserve what really is Jacksonville Beach, we can all agree flashing signs do not elevate. The experience of being at the beach, we can find that in Orange Park on Blanding Boulevard. And across the ditch in Jacksonville, thank you so much, I appreciate it, thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Deluge, Brian Blanchard.
Brian Blanchard, twelve twenty-four First Street South, Jacksonville Beach. Thank you, City Council Mayor, very nice to be here and uh express my uh thoughts on a, this issue. Um, I just wanted to give three quick perspectives on. New Land Development Code twenty twenty-five two eight eight two. Um. When asking someone who's leaving Jack's Beach if they care or. Want City Council to have their, or their neighbors or their own property to have. No front yard or no backyard or their neighbors right next to them, they probably wouldn't care, they probably would think whatever gets me the most money. And then when you conversate with people that do want to live here, continue to live here, live, or raise their families here. They would. Overwhelmingly say no, do you want the house next to you to be right on front, do you want all the houses in your neighborhood to have no front? Yard, no backyard, or very little? And then. The third perspective I wanted to share is I've been in this very room. When people come in with their family and friends and one of various variances on their property, their building. And they ask for all kinds of variances, and they promise to live here and raise their families here, and as soon as the building is completed. There's a big for sale sign, and it's really aggravating the people that were trying to. Prevent that from happening, and, and it does happen, and I've witnessed it, I'm sure you have too. Um, overall, I just want you to somehow confi- uh consider all three of these. Um, issues when looking at the building code enforcement and so forth, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard, Fernando Mesa.
Good evening, everyone, uh, sixteen twenty-one, Sixth Avenue, I still gotta remember the new address. Um, first of all, I won't be here the next reading, so I'm here today, but I do want to begin by thanking Mike Sepoplis, Karen. Obviously, you know, mayor, this has been a long awaited. Update on our land development code, it has been an ongoing battle, finally thirty, forty years later, it's getting done, so it's. Thanks for uh agreeing and doing this, also, I want to thank uh former council member Drujett Daman, Corey Nichols, Chet Stokes. Everyone on council that has worked on this, given input, uh, it, this is an important document, um, so. It's not perfect, but I do believe this is a better document than the one we have right now. I think it'll help the planning department, it'll help the growth here in Jacksonville Beach, uh, if this document was. Up, would, would have been updated years ago, I think some of the controversies we've had here would have not been possible, so. I'm glad this is getting done, um, I know Councilmember Dan Jansen brought it up at the workshop, how this document is a breathing document. Um, if you, you guys on the dais can elaborate to the residents, not just tonight. But maybe on the last reading that this is a breathing document, that it will change if there's some. Sort of glitch, um, I think that it is great for the residents, committee residents probably believe that this is a done deal. Which it is, but it, the document can change, um, so I think explaining that to the residents would be great. Um, I know the mayor has been here since twenty twelve and has seen some very uh difficult challenges, uh, but. Also updating the land development code is not as easy as changing a letter and. Uh, when you're typing a letter to someone, uh, this has to go through the state, so if you guys can explain that to the residents. That some of the changes that I even wanted or saw Heather had to explain to me that. This can bring some legal consequences, so this land development code has to. Be in the same guidelines with the state, so if you guys can explain that to the residents, so. They don't think that you guys are ignoring their, their, their asks for some of the ch- the changes that are not possible because the state tells you, you guys can do it. Um. How much time do I have, twenty-three seconds, and then one last thing, I know you guys are going to Tallahassee to advocate for us, uh, it's greatly appreciated that everyone's going. Um. If you guys, I know you brought that uh dissenting bill, I think it's imperative. You guys speak on behalf of us and against that bill, I think it's going to be a detriment if it continues to move on forward. Uh, we need to protect not just Jacksonville Beach, but everyone here, so uh, thank you guys for everything and uh good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. Thank you, Mr. Mesa, Matt Beerschile. Can't wait to hear how this is actually pronounced.
You were close. It's Matt Beerschide.
Oh, is that a D? That's on you. Alright, thank you. Mr. Beerschide.
Seven twenty-six, Ninth Avenue North here in Jacksonville Beach. Um, I am requesting a delay on the ordinance uh vote. I, I believe that it's uh, it's. Irresponsible to vote this quickly on what we just saw for one month on its final version. The devil is in the details. Um, I understand that you guys all think this is gonna be a living document, but look how long it took to process it this far. I- if next year I don't see this happening as something that's gonna be revised by you guys, it's gonna take a long argument again on this. So the items that were raised um in the workshop on the twentieth, uh, I see none of it. Even being addressed in what was just addressed today. Um. Items that you guys are asking us, I, I love Kim Lee Horn. They're an engineer that works for, on projects that I've got throughout the state. Um, by in nature, they are civil engineers. And I'm the person that has to take it from ground and bring it up. And you guys are asking me on certain limitations. Like the driveway with the, the footprint of the building is a ratio on that for coverage. These items do not relate and you're asking me to do apples to the ratio of oranges and make bananas on this at the end of the day. Uh, it's, it's not easier for us to create a final product for a client at the end of the day and it becomes more difficult. Um, this is not a standard I designed throughout the entire country. This is not a standard anywhere else that I have run into. And this was an item that wasn't Kim Lee Horn. I believe it was the city that defined it at the end of the day. And unfortunately, it's something that's too custom. It doesn't work. You can't create something though. Um. At the end of the day, I just think we should extend this further, have additional workshops on this work and actually go into this true verbiage on this. Um, stupid little things like I believe I, I saw the first complaints on signage. Um, I know there's a sign down at the end, down towards the um, south end of town that, that is so bright at night. That it actually blinds me. Um, and I'd like to consider I'm a little bit younger, right? So and it's still bothering my eyes while I'm driving down the street. Uh, lumen output should be a restriction both daytime and nighttime included in on signage. If you do allow for digital signs, it can do or not. Um, but certain little things like that should be incorporated and. Nothing has been included or addressed based off of the twentieth meeting that I saw. That's pretty much all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Beerschide, Kathleen Lewis.
Kathleen Lewis, twenty-four Thirty-first Avenue South, Jacksonville Beach. The, there was an error on the board that, at the workshop for the setbacks. And we tried to look them up today to, to be sure that they were corrected and we could not find that. And so I just wanna be assured that as you're reading through this, you double check. And it had to do with the um. Twenty-five thirty and then the side setbacks. They had it written as five, which it wasn't supposed to be. So I'm just here to remind everybody to check that. And I also wanna say I don't think we need any more votes. This kinda gets to something that. Psychologists call mental masturbation. We've been doing it enough, so we need to move forward. And the only people that are really, really, really against it are the people that have self-serving businesses involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Um, that is it for speaker cards. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of or against this ordinance? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twen- twenty twenty-five dash eight two two zero. On the first reading repealing and replacing chapter thirty-four land development code on, of the city code of ordinances and schedule second reading from March seventeenth. Twenty twenty-five.
Second, before opening the floor for discussion or questions by the council, please be reminded that our decision will be based on the criteria set forth in the land development code. Staffs report the recommendation of planning commission and the public input at all hearings. Um, discussion room council, Mr. Jansen.
Yeah, sort of sounding like the um echo chamber. I, I, I'm gonna kinda repeat what I did say at the workshop. Um, it has been thirty-four years and it was a static document up to that, up to this time. And there has been two years of work um put into this land development code. Um, if we're gonna sit and wait for the perfect document to come across the dais before we approve it, it'll never get done. So. Uh, another factor that we have to consider is. When we're looking at the bills that are filed at the state level, when we look at the ADU bill, Senate Bill uh one eighty-four or um. Uh, and quite frankly, a lot of them, um, we face preemption by the state if we don't ratify our own land development code and put it and bring it up to speed. Um, like Mr. Tipton, I've been here, grew up here fifty-one years ago when the numbered avenues were paved and the numbered streets were dirt. And so we've come a long way since that time. But now it's time to have the living, breathing document of our land, land development so that we can review annually. And I'm not saying that we will have changes every year, but at least we have the opportunity to make a change if one is needed. And we can rectify or remedy any issues that we have or, cause there's always unintended consequences when you're, when you're. Doing a complete overhaul of a document such as this. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen, Ms. Golding.
Thank you. Um, to follow up on what Mr. Jansen said. Uh, I do wanna add, it has been thirty-four years, but there have been changes made over those thirty-four years. I think what's really at issue here is that, that we really need to update the code to get it up to today's. Standard, so to speak, or, you know, I think over the years with the changes that were made. It's like anything, it gets klugey, it gets patchy. And so things are not as cohesive or. Um, not, not necessarily uh where it needs to be. So I don't want anybody to think that the code hasn't been touched for thirty-four years, cause it has. And, but that's part of the problem is that we've gotta get the code in a better place. And so that's the purpose of what we're doing here tonight. Um, I do want to uh recognize what. The, the concerns that Mr. Deloach has about signs, uh, digital message signs. I just got back from Palm Springs, California. Never been there before. And wow, what an amazing community that is. And they did not have any digital message signs there at all. Um, and you know what? Their businesses were like thriving and, and doing really well. So. I think, you know, it's um. I, I'm glad that we've pulled that out of the code for now. If we need to discuss it, we need to have a more robust discussion about that. Um, I also share Mr. Tipton's concerns about what's to keep people from now saying, well, now we wanted. Now we want fifty-two percent lot coverage or fifty-four percent lot coverage. Um. And I, I guess, I don't know, can somebody maybe respond to that concern? Um, what we, how we feel. We, you know. What we may see in the way of requests over fifty percent.
Uh, sure. Um, I think kind of the critical point that relates to all these issues is that. Um, prior to the changes we've made to this code related to things like lot coverage, lot size. Density, not density, but setbacks and things like that. Um. A great majority of the lots in this city were considered substandard because they didn't meet the minimum requirements for that zoning district. Uh, after a lot of um review. We've uh tried to adjust those sizes to match what's actually on the ground. So step one, we've eliminated the question of whether most of these lots even have a hardship. Anyone's welcome to ask for a variance, but staff stance would be, there's no reason to approve this. We've also gone through and clarified um the criteria for variance and made it very explicit that this, this is something. You wanna do, that is ultimately a self-imposed hardship unless there's a literal. Uh, deficiency with the lot. Maybe it's in shape, maybe it's in size or some historic structure or older structure that's not conforming. There has to be a, an actual reason why you need relief. Um, I think that over the years, that hasn't been the case, but. We're gonna do a lot of training with the board and like I said, from staff's perspective, the recommendation's gonna be no unless there's some. Extremely circumstance. Certainly people will ask for more. Our answer would be no.
Well, I, I do appreciate your point and I appreciate all the work that's been done to. Analyze the lots that we have here in Jack's Beach and try to make our code match what we have. You know, in, in the lots. And I think um, that's, I hope that that's gonna make a big difference. With regard to these variances that we've been getting. Um, also, the. Ms. Lewis who asked about the error that was pointed out in the workshop with regard to the setbacks, can you, can you talk to that? Christian, has that been fixed?
Yeah, um, part of that confusion was me, cause I had an older version, older draft of the code when we were having that meeting. Um, but yeah, so under um RS two and RS three. Residential single family has a combined setback of fifteen feet for the side yards. With one being no less than five, which is what's in the code currently. We've just carried that forward. I don't think so.
We're getting better, but we're not that good.
So, and then the gentleman's concerns about the lumens. Um, I totally agree, cause I've seen that sign and it is, it is definitely a blinding sign. Do we have anything? I don't remember seeing anything in the code that has anything to do with. The lumens of the signs, the digital signs that are permitted. And then, and if we were to have that, how is that? Enforced and regulated?
Um, I think our language currently is pretty broad and talks about flashing or distracting or blinding. I don't think it has a specific lumen standard, but let me just double check real quick.
If you can't pull that up easily, um, since this, since the change has been taken out. I, I would suggest and I agree with you, if this is something we're gonna discuss, we need to do a deeper dive and focus on it specifically. Cause that particular sign is, is quite offensive to the eye as you drive by. Um, and probably dangerous. So. I think we can do, I, I personally think thirty seconds is very aggressive, twenty-four hours is too long. There's a lot of time in between there that we could um discuss as a council and a community, but, but the brightness and the safety factor is something we need to do that. I think altogether, a little more holistically.
Kind of what we did with the charter, perhaps we have a parking lot where we put some things like, um, like. Vacation rentals. That's another one, because I, I do like some of the changes that were made, but I don't think that. As a council, we've had a good opportunity to talk about. Things that we can do, things that other communities are doing, um, that sort of thing. So that's another one. I'm fine with where it is right now and with the changes that were made. But I do believe we have some opportunities for additional improvements. So, um. Yeah, I, and I will say that I do appreciate all the work that's gone into this, particularly um, all the time that. Heather and Christian has taken with me to answer questions and go over a lot of the, the questions that I had. Um, so. And I also do appreciate you listening to um, the community as far as like some of the changes that were made. As a result of some of the comments and the workshop, so, and appreciate holding the workshop. Because I think that was a very important piece of this process. Thank you.
I do like the idea of a parking lot. If there's a spare whiteboard in the planning department.
Yeah, actually, we've got kind of a running list of what's like, you can do now, what we can do later.
Mr. Horn?
Um, yeah, I was, say thank you everybody for being here. Um, and. In reference to what council woman Golding just mentioned about short-term vacation rentals, yeah. You know, I'm happy with some of the things that we as a city have done. We're actually doing a lot more than a lot of areas do. But that is such a fluid type of a thing that, yeah, it's gonna take a lot of work down the road. Um, it's. And we're going to continue to see issues with that regardless of how we make this land development code. Um. One thing I wanna ask, and this is maybe more towards David, um, procedurally. We vote tonight and then tomorrow landmark Harvard study comes out regarding uh lot coverage. And driveway size and uh, you know, signage lumens. And so we want to change that in between now and the next reading. How does that work? If there's something that comes up in between now and the next reading, what is the process? Is there a process or is this? How's that work?
So you, you all would still be able to make, make changes. The legal standard is, relates to the title of the ordinance. The law said it says it has to be read at two different meetings. The title's very general, not specific in this case. So legally, you're fine. Um, common sense and best practices is to, you know, broadcast. In the event something like that happens, get it out to the public that, hey, this big change came down. We're, we're gonna be looking, you know, at completely new stuff that wasn't contemplated a few weeks ago. You know, highly unlikely that happens, but we'd still be fine. And we should just be as proactive as possible and get the word out.
Okay, I just didn't know the procedure. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton?
Uh, thanks to Kim Lee Horn for sure and to Heather and Christian and. Any other staff that were involved in this. And um, I think the, the uh. LDC as it's been amended here and presented is uh, just a vast improvement over um. What we've had and, and been having to apply in all of these uh variances and. Um, um, you know, planning uh applications and everything. Um, that Terry and myself and David Dahl and people all the way back for the last seventeen or twenty years. That I can remember have been having to deal with this um, really outdated document. That's been to, to Ms. Golding's point amended and patchworked together. Um, forever, it seems like. And so it's, it's frustrating for the um, boards. And um, and I agree with what Christian says and the issue you brought up, Ms. Golding, as far as um. Cause that is a concern on lot coverage and, you know, we're just gonna keep raising the bar and what comes next. But I think it's imperative to put on. You know, staff and the board of adjustment that, you know, what we used to do is not the norm anymore. And um, now that we've updated the code and then the combination of modifying the minimum lot size, I think will, for the most part, take care of that. There's always gonna be, be, you know, be a few exceptions, but um. The um, I think the code as it is been presented is a great improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. And Mr. Popoli, just a process question, and I'm asking this on behalf of. Two little boys in the south end who are hoping for a swimming pool by the summer. This passes today, sounds like it will, passes again on the seventeenth. I know we have a moratorium on variance applications right now. What? What's the timeline from there, if you think that we can kinda get back in business?
Um, well, i- if you guys pass this on the seventeenth, um, I assume there's some period of time before it goes into effect. I'm not really sure. David might be able to answer that better, but in essence, if it's a pool and pool decking that falls within that fifteen percent. It would just be a building permit that we would review. So in essence, they could start, you know.
On the eighteenth, they could put in their building permit application on the eighteenth and that would go through its normal process.
The only um, you know, caveat to that might be the um. If there's some reason why they might need a variance for, you know, but honestly, they could put the pool in right now and just wait on the decking. If that was an option too, cause those take a few months, um, cause we don't count the pool as lot coverage. But yeah, they should be able to do that pretty quickly once this passes.
I think that's the key there though, is if they need a variance. If that, I think would get protracted out if I recall the um, moratorium.
I believe that the reason it's being held up is that with the new code, they wouldn't need a variance. So I don't wanna speak on behalf of.
That's part of.
Their dad is here, so I wanted to go ahead and ask on, on their behalf.
Totally fair. Um, but also to um, Councilman Sutton's point, um, we need to train these boards on the new code. So that's part of the delay as well, cause we don't want them kinda doing what they've always done with a code that doesn't make sense.
Mr. Wagner?
So I think we can uh probably deem this work somewhat successful because nobody likes the outcome. And I think they say that is the definition of good work completed. So, um, so, so I, I take some resolve in that. That, that nobody got all of their own wishes. Um, and, and to kind of uh, kind of reconfirm what was said. Um, like personally, I guarantee we will be looking at this once a year. There are things I wanna look at. Um, and so um, there are things that, and I know that, you know, if we're doing our jobs, we're listening. To our community, there's things out there that are still um, in, in a state of limbo for folks, so. So I don't think we could not look at it if we wanted to. So I'm, I'm very, very confident. Um, one of the things that um, I do, I do think we need to, to formalize prior to voting is a timeline on when the moratorium's down, when people are trained. Um, I, I do think it's, it's very appropriate for us to set factual expectations with our residents on what happens next. So I do ask um, city staff to make sure that on the eighteenth, that is documented and, and we can talk through that at a, at a very specific level. Um, and then lastly, uh, again, I'll tell you, this has been a great process uh, for community involvement. The number of people that have been here, understanding all the, the, the different items that are important to people, the, the research folks have done. Uh, so I really do wanna just thank all of you, um, all of you online that are, I know there's hundreds out there listening, cause this is much CTV. But um, really do wanna appreciate it. And, and then to city staff and our business partners, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Wouters?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and welcome back. Um, first of all, uh, Counselor David, is this a legislative matter? Yes or no?
This is legislative. It is not quasi-judicial.
Thank you, David. Um, I think there's a lot of good in this new LDC, but I think it can be improved. And um, I have several concerns regarding the new LDC, namely the reduced side, front and rear setbacks. Bearing in mind that the new structure is built under these rules, will be in our community long after we are all gone. I ask your patience while I express my concerns for your consideration. Let me ask this di- this honorable dais a question. Would you like it if the distance between you and the chair or chairs next to you was cut in half? It's not so long ago, our citizens overwhelmingly voted against the height amendment. And I believe that if the side setbacks and runt and rear expansions in RS three, RM one and RM two were put to a vote, they would be rejected by a similar result. Firstly, the, the current residents in the affected areas have had the protection of ten feet side setbacks since they moved in or built. Unlike short-term rentals, this is a change we can protect them from. Also, having walls five feet from your property line with the eaves and gutters extending another three feet causes stormwater to blow and splash on the adjacent property, settling against society and causing rot. It also creates drainage and flooding issues and wind tunnels that increase storm winds, causing problems. As the apex of a roof can be forty feet tall, given the way the thirty-five height amendment is applied, new structures block out sunlight in sky, they stick out like a sore thumb, and they do not fit with the character of the neighborhood as required by the comp plan. Additionally, having aligned windows with a view of each other's rooms causes a significant loss of privacy. In addition, there's no room for kids, animals or people to play, diminishes our small-town community feel. Most folks are against buildings right on top of each other. Uh, plus, as an aside, during the year or two it takes to build these uh, new structures, with the scaffolding being right to the property line, adjacent properties are bombarded with all types of construction debris. The front and rear setbacks, I leave for another day. As stated, this is a legislative matter. I respectfully suggest that the, most of the residents are against these changes. The comp plan's first chapter, first sentence reads. Flan- uh, future land use, vision FLU one. Ensure that the character, density, intensity and location of all land uses provides a system for sustainable smart growth and the redevelopment that enhances the quality of life and safety for all residents of Jack's Beach. In my view, these changes are contrary to the comp plan, are not smart growth, reduce the quality of life, increase density, and fundamentally changes the character of our neighborhoods. Therefore, I make a motion to amend ordinance twenty-twenty-five eighty-two eighty in that the pre- uh, the proposed new reductions in the side setbacks found in Article six, Chapter thirty-four, Section six thirteen RS three, as it pertains to townhouses. Section six fourteen RM one, as it pertains to single-family and townhouses. And Section six fifteen RM two, as it pertains to all uses, to strike the five-foot setbacks and retain the ten-foot side setback protections found in the current code. Thank you so very much for your patience and I yield the floor to this honorable dais.
We have a motion to amend. Is there a second? Seeing no second, motion to amend fails. Any other comments from the council? Mr. Wouters, your light is still on?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Ms. Golding?
I, I just want clarification. So Christian, it, the RS three, RM one and RM two, those were, those side setbacks were reduced from the current code. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Reduced from ten foot?
Depending on the use, um, so predominantly the issue would be townhomes. Um, they were reduced from ten on the outside of the group of buildings to five. Um, but that was in uh, response to trying to be able to provide additional parking on each lot. We've made the minimum lot requirements bigger for all the units and requiring a two-car driveway. If you've got a twenty-five foot wide lot with a ten-foot setback, you've got a fifteen-foot wide house, one-car garage and likely not a driveway that's gonna fit extra cars, particularly um, in the middle units. So that was the intent. And when we did that for any form of attached housing, the single-family made sense not to penalize someone for wanting to build one unit by making them have to meet a larger dimensional standard, as they could build two townhomes and have more setback relief. So we've tried to make that consistent, so there's no disincentive to building single-family as opposed to multiple units. Multi-family is still ten feet. We haven't changed that, cause those are individual buildings that have multiple units, so they're looked at differently. Um, but yeah, and RM two, they have a five-yard setback as well. But again, RM two is our densest residential category and it was a question of parking over space.
And I guess, I guess perhaps the biggest concern would be properties, say, single-family properties adjacent to these properties that are being built as multi-family. Is that, is that maybe your primary concern, Mr. Wouters?
My primary concern is for the people who have lived here their whole lives or forever, whatever amount of time. I don't think that it is in the best interest of our community or the people who live here to allow these new buildings to um, just overshadow their property. It destroys your privacy. I mean, I, I don't wanna repeat what I've just said, but I know the people in RS one and RS two have not expen- uh, experiences. But for the people who live in RM two, which is almost fifty percent of our residents, this is a real problem. And when it's in your face every day, you might consider other ones.
Any other comments or questions from council? Madam Clark Roll call. Councilmember Golding? Yes. Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
No.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. Our second reading will be on Saint Patrick's Day. Uh, thank you Blair and Mark for continuing to partner with us on this project. Thank you, Christian, for representing the planning department. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any posed?